And we are grateful that everybody's able to be on tonight. We are going to have a period where we'll have some presentations. Later on during our question and answer period, we'll have an opportunity to get those questions answered with by you putting those questions in the question answer chat in the question and answer form or in the chat. We're going to be reviewing those and then have an opportunity to respond those for whoever the questions are directed toward. I'm grateful that we're on tonight, recording everything so that we can forward it to of the members who are not able to hear some of the things that will be shared tonight. So to start us off will be Eda Hill, our lay leader, and we're going to start with prayer.
Good evening, family. Let us pray. Mercyful, loving God, we worship you, we praise you, Lord, we thank you. Thank you for another beautiful day to magnify your name. Father, we thank you for your word that says you are our shepherd. And even though we are passing through trying times, you are with us. Lord, we pray for those attending this town hall meeting, and we ask for your guidance as we discuss the business of your church. Father, give us wisdom to know when to speak and when to listen. Father, we know that this is your church, given to us for just a little while to do what we hope pleases you. Father, we pray for those facing medical challenges. We pray for the bereaved and those who are lost and lonely. Let your presence fill their hearts. Lord, we don't know what the future holds for us, but we know who holds the future. Father, we ask that you restore peace and kindness to this world, our communities, our homes, and our churches. Lastly, Lord, we pray for and thank you for your protection, your provision, and your guidance as we continue this journey. These things we ask in the righteous name of Jesus, who is the living word. Amen.
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 Now we'll read and recite the vision of Trinity United Methodist Church, liberating and empowering people with the love of Jesus Christ. Liberating and empowering people with the love of Jesus Christ. And our mission, building relationships beyond the church through relevant discipleship and life transforming worship as we serve Jesus Christ. And now we will hear of the 2020-2021 accomplishments from the other lay leader, Art Abernathy. Thank you.
Thank you, Eda. And good evening, everyone. My purpose this evening is to give a brief overview of some of the key achievements we've been able to accomplish at Trinity over the last eighteen months. And I believe then that the last eighteen months could be described by words penned long ago when confusion and uncertainty was prevalent among the masses. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times, it was the age of wisdom, it was the age of foolishness, it was the epic of belief, it was the epic of incredulous, it was the season of light, it was the season of darkness, it was the spring of hope, it was the winter of despair. And like the people of Charles Dickens' day, we have seen and witnessed the worst, but we also have seen and witnessed the best. Over these months of many trials, there have been substantially more successes than defeats. We have learned how to be better stewards of God's finances and resources through Financial Peace University, not only in the house of Trinity, but throughout the community, our state, our country, and even in other parts of the world. And though that commitment and alliance, and through that commitment and alliance was born, a relationship with the Delta Sigma Theta debt-free team to provide similar program to free us from the burdens of financial despair. To bring ourselves and others closer to God, we have begun the Alpha Study Series where we ask the hard questions to and about God and that we were always afraid to bring out into the light. What a blessing it was to be able to provide space and comfort to our community of young people during this year Sanctuary of Learning Academy partnership with HISD. Holy Communion took on a whole different element of reverence when our worship and communion stewards packaged and distributed the elements on our parking lot each month, as well as the homes of those not able to drive by. And we became filled with joy and excitement when we found out that the Bishop's African-American Church Initiative had placed, made, and awarded Trinity grant funding to further its plan for growth and discipleship in and around our historic community. When COVID said no to our tradition of communal worship, we introduced parking lot worship to keep us not only safe in body, but full in spirit and faith. You would think that while the spirit of darkness loomed in our midst, that Sunday school would suffer. But God moves in mysterious ways His wonders to perform. Not only is class growing, but studies have been introduced unlike any we have encountered or studied in the past, out of which a community of faithful students have bonded closer in virtuality than in person. And these are just a tip of the best that we have birthed out of the worst. And others who will follow me will allude to that fact. God continues to say for us His best wine for last. Thank you, and I will give the mic now to the next speaker, whom I believe is Stephanie McNeil.
Evening. Throughout 2021, 2020, 2021 achievements, the children and youth ministry has been growing and moving in new bounds. We worship every Sunday through Zoom with our children. We have them engaged from eleven to twelve, and we are gradually meeting kids who are not particularly members of Trinity, but they are visiting. Our kids are able to log into Zoom and participate in Children's Church when they are traveling. And so we've been averaging about twenty kids almost every Sunday. So hooray for the children's ministry and Children's Church is constantly moving, and we're looking forward to new ways to improve and to encourage others to join. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Diane Eigerhart.
Good evening, church family. And just as Art and Stephanie have said, through these uncertain times, we have been able to reach more people. The virtual platform has allowed us to really further our message and make more friends and build more relationships. And those are words that are part of our mission and goal statements. And we are able to go beyond our church walls. We started off the year with the bang with our COVID-19 forum. This was an educational opportunity for our congregation and for the community on vaccine awareness, the importance of and why you should be vaccinated, and also to reduce vaccine hesitancy. And we had the collaboration of the University of Houston Medical College of Medicine and also Baylor College of Medicine professors, and also our two own mother-daughter team at Trinity, Doctors Janine and Natalie. And they certainly did add expertise. Following on chronological order, in February, you know, we have had three in-person collaborative health fairs. Well, this year, of course, it went virtual, and this year was our fourth one. And yet and still, we went ahead and forged ahead, made a difference, made an impact, and we were able to record it as we're doing this and share that recording out and give a lot of health initiative news. Health has become very much mission. It's through health that we are really making more connections and building a lot of relationships. It has expanded what we do as far as educating our community and as far as providing outreach opportunities. We were fortunate to be a part of a grant with Change Happens that afforded us an opportunity to gain a thousand dollars to the mission fund to help our members in need. And we've been able to help two of our members that received a lot of damage during the winter storm. And for that, we're grateful. That particular grant focused on the vaccine. It was like a focus group. We talked about vaccine hesitancy and the importance of being vaccinated. As we move on throughout the year, as you know, this coming weekend, we are going to have an opportunity to have a grand opening of our partnership with the American Heart Association. And that will be in our parking lot. As Art has said, our parking lot has become a tool for evangelism and discipleship and outreach. And we are using it to expand it. And we were grateful to be selected as a Third Ward site for that fresh produce march. Third Ward sticks out for food insecurity. Fifty-one percent of the residents in Third Ward suffer from food insecurity and wonder where they're getting their next meal. So this will certainly enhance our outreach and build our relationships. Also, at the top of June, the kickoff hurricane prepared this month and awareness month and the season that we know that we're right in the middle of, we collaborated with the Third Ward Community Caucus and had a forum addressing that topic. And that, of course, was also another recorded event. We're able to share out and to share that information. So we continue to meet the needs of our community. We continue to also want you all to let us know what else we can do. The Energy Forum, as we know, was our collaborative with TMO. We continue to be a member of them. We've been a longstanding member of TMO. And that was very helpful because some of our congregational members received a lot of resources and referrals on how to recover from those damages. And so those are just ways that we know that we're able to connect. So we want to continue our virtual platform as long as is necessary, but we also want to do things in person. And this Saturday will be something that we do in person. We've already had one vaccination site event. That was at the top of June. That was the first dosage of the Moderna. That was with the Harris County Public Health System. We will have the second dosage of Moderna on July third. And those people that have to come back for that second dosage will be contacted by Harris County. So we will continue to do things that relate to pertinent things that are happening in our lives, relevancy. And we want to collaborate with the other servant leaders to make it happen. We do appreciate you all's support. For this past year, we've had fun, but we've met it head-on, and we know that we're meeting needs of uncertain times. And I think the next speaker is Gloria Hayes.
Good evening, Trinity family and friends. I would like to start off by saying thank you for your support and your prayers. Trinity Preparatory Academy's board consists of Dr. Mondale Addison, Dr. Ruth Robbins, Dr. Rolanda Hearn, Christina Hopkins, Mary Booker, and yours truly Gloria Hayes. And if you had to add up all those number of years and education of service, I would think it probably would add up to close to five hundred. Just kidding. The age level of our Trinity Preparatory Academy will be from six-month-olds to five-year-olds. Presently, as soon as tomorrow, we will interview virtually three applicants for the position of Director of the Academy. Thus far, we have interviewed three candidates, giving a total of six candidates applying. The Texas Annual Conference is giving us $25,000 for upgrades and renovations for the academy. The playground equipment, which has been paid by the conference, should arrive at the end of June. So soon you will be able to see the playground equipment with a fence around it between the two buildings on the Live Oak side. Furniture as tables, chairs, cribs is being provided by the Texas Annual Conference and is presently in the warehouse. As you drive along Live Oak and Holman, there are two banners announcing Trinity Preparatory Academy on the fence. A webpage has been created for the academy. You can look under tumc.org. There you will see our logo, a pre-enrollment form, contact information, and also you will find info about job opportunities such as director, teacher, or teacher A. These are our latest updates for the Trinity Preparatory Academy. Again, I thank you for your prayers and your support. And our next speaker is Billy Sexton.
Good evening, everyone. Everything that we have comes from God. And everything that you choose to share with Trinity to advance God's kingdom is very much appreciated. I just wanted to take an opportunity to tell everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you've done to support our ministries and to help Trinity continue to create disciples for Jesus Christ. I just kind of wanted to share a comparison of where we were pre-COVID and what we've been able to do during the pandemic. The finance team has never stopped. We've been working very diligently the entire time throughout the pandemic to make sure that we can continue to be a viable source of Christianity for everyone. So if you happen to see the chart that we have here for comparison, from January 2019 to February 2020, which was all pre-COVID, our total income from offering and tithes, our tithes and offering was $647,000, $647, $27.61. And during COVID time, from March 20th to May 2021, we were able to bring in $592,145.31, which is a difference of $54,882.30. So right now, looking at it percentage-wise, we're off about nine percent. But I think we've done a fantastic job, and I have to applaud all of you for continuing to support Trinity and everything that we're trying to do. The Finance Committee meets every month. If anyone is interested in attending our meetings, just reach out to me. The finance meeting is open for you to attend. So if there's any questions, someone can reach out to me after the meeting or just email me and let me know if there's any other information you need about where we are financially. And thank you for your attention. Next on our agenda is our trustees, Arnold Cotton will be speaking with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Good evening, everyone. I would like to share with you all the projects that we've completed over the last year and a half, as well as the current projects that are in progress this time, and also the future upcoming projects. So some of the significant completed projects that we've done have been to upgrade the main electrical service to the church. We've replaced all the lighting in the Bradford Taylor and McGee Hall and upstairs classrooms with new LED fixtures. We've added new lighting systems to the pulpit in the choir area. We purchased and installed new sound equipment and systems. We've installed a dedicated electrical panel for the sound system. We've also purchased and installed new cameras and other visual aid equipment. We hired an architect to convert all the paper blueprints of the entire church facilities and withdraw them in AutoCAD in the digital form. So we have those for future if we need to do anything with those. The current projects that are in progress are we're in the process of in the next couple of weeks, bringing in the contractor to re-roof the Bradford Taylor and the McGee Hall, along with some roof repairs to the tar and gravel roof in the choir room area. There's repair. We've got to repair the damage, the water damage in the choir room. And once the leaking issue is resolved, which part of that is the roof repair. We've hired an interior designer to design a master plan for color schemes of paint and recommended flooring materials throughout the church. So I'd like to take this opportunity to invite any persons and members who are interested to attend a design presentation that would be held at the church this coming Saturday, June the 26th, at 10:45 a.m. The current, we, our overall plan is replacing the flooring throughout the church. But our first, it would be done in phases. So the first phase of the flooring project would be the Bradford Taylor Center, McGee Hall, and the upstairs classrooms. We're also we're also in the process of addressing the city of Houston occupancy inspections, punch list of things that need to be done to McGee Hall to obtain our certificate of occupancy for the Trinity Preparatory Academy. The future projects that we're looking at would be the continuation of flooring with Phase Two of the flooring project would be the sanctuary and the fellowship hall. We're also looking into the pew replacement versus repairs, restorations. There will be also a representative from a pew company on Saturday to give a presentation. The third and last thing that I have here is we're going to be working closely with the tiers, the tax increment reinvestment zone, who has a major Holman Street and Live Oak Street improvement projects that is coming soon. We don't know exactly. They're still in the design phase on the Live Oak side, but it's going to affect, it's going to it's going to involve widening the street. You know, perhaps they're going to, there's going to be some sidewalk issues. Possibly going to cover up those ditches and make parking spaces along there and it's going to affect us. And so they, what we call stakeholders, because it is going to affect us in terms of our entrance, currently our entrance canopy on the Live Oak side is is more than likely going to be affected. So we're going to have to find out how it is affected and what we can do. Also, we're going to be addressing the accessibility to the church for the entrance for wheelchair accessibility currently. What we have there is not in compliance with ADA or Texas accessibility standards or anything. So our architect was working on coming up with a solution to create an accessible entrance to the church. And that concludes what I have in my report. So I'm going to pass it on to Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton, for sharing that information. I want to encourage everyone to know that God has done a great work in and through us and has carried us this far. I want to make sure before I share anything else that we hear from some of, a medical professional from our community in terms of someone who can give us some latests of what's going on with COVID. And so I want to make sure I introduce Dr. Janine Daly-Garns. If she can come and just share some information about COVID at this time.
Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes.
So just kind of things to keep in mind as we're thinking about returning to in-person service. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So as many of you are aware, and I know Mrs. Eigerhart talked about this. So we know that there are COVID-19 vaccines available. Currently, there are three vaccines that have emergency use authorization. The Pfizer vaccine is authorized for those age 12 and older, Moderna 18 and older, Johnson &amp; Johnson 18 and older. And why do we care? Hello? Because it makes a big difference in terms of what the recommendations are for remaining safe, if you're fully vaccinated or you're not fully vaccinated. Just going back to the current vaccines, so we know that Pfizer is probably going to seek full licensing very shortly. Moderna will probably follow after that. Moderna has ongoing studies in 12 to 17-year-olds. And so they're seeking emergency use authorization for that group soon. And then in terms of the five to 11-year-olds, their thoughts that there may be vaccine with emergency use authorization for that group by the fall. Now, we don't know that they're testing the vaccine, at least the Pfizer vaccine, six months up to 11 years. I haven't heard anything about when they might have vaccine or recommendations for that six-month to four-year age range. So you know, what's the difference? If you're fully vaccinated, your likelihood, we now know, the studies were done to see if getting vaccinated decreased the likelihood that you were going to end up in the hospital or in the ICU or dying from COVID. That's what the studies were designed to find, and they found that. And it was on that basis that the FDA authorized the use of the vaccines. But since that time, they've actually gone back and done studies that do the vaccines actually prevent you from getting COVID in the first place? Do the vaccines actually prevent you from giving COVID to other people? And we do have evidence now that the vaccines do both of those things, which is really great news. So your likelihood of getting sick with COVID is low if you're fully vaccinated. Your likelihood of making others sick is low. And for that reason, the CDC has recommended that that group of people can resume activities without a mask or physically distancing. If you're not fully vaccinated, you know, again, if you're around other people that are fully vaccinated, your likelihood of getting COVID is low. It is recommended that when you're in public, i.e. you don't know if the people around you are vaccinated or not, that you continue to mask or physically distance. So you know, what is the situation? So Texas, we are lagging behind the country as a whole. I think the country as a whole is like 45% fully vaccinated. And I know there's some And I know there's some discussion in the news about, you know, not reaching that July 4th goal. Houston, in particular, is 40.5% fully vaccinated, or at least one dose. And the metro areas, at least 48.4% have received at least one dose. So the things that we've been kind of keeping an eye on, like, you know, when is it okay for us to feel safe about, you know, going back to something more normal? So our goal is always to have what we call an infection rate less than one. That means if somebody's infected, they're not necessarily infecting one or more other people. And then the positive test rate, we generally want it to be less than 5%. So currently, we're at 0.82 and 3.4%. So those are good signs. The other thing that we've really been looking for is a seven-day average of new cases, less than 200. We're really close to that, as close as we've been in a long time. So we were at 213 for the seven days average from yesterday. However, when we look at the distribution of cases, because someone asked me this before, we're still seeing a lot of cases in our brown and black communities. The higher proportions of cases are now, where it was before, there was more of a distribution in our older adults. You know, we prioritized vaccinating that group, and a lot of them got vaccinated. And so now we're seeing more cases in the zero to 49 group. Looking specifically at vaccination rates among Black and African-Americans in Harris County, the weekly vaccinations are now up to 11.8%. But remember, we're 18.7% of the population in Harris County, so that's definitely still below where we would like. And those percentages were lower when the vaccine first started, and so we're now playing catch-up. And then the other thing to keep in mind, I'm sure you've heard in the news about this Delta variant. You know, there's several variants circulating from around the world. The Delta variant is particularly a variant that's very active in India, which is having an uncontrolled outbreak. And the thing that's, you know, of concern with this variant is that it is more easily contagious, and it seems to cause more severe illness. Now, there is evidence that the vaccine does provide some protection. So again, you know, getting vaccinated is still helpful in protecting you against this variant. So what does this mean, you know, for us to keep in mind as we think about going back in person, seeing each other? So the CDC has recommendations for communities of faith. The last time they were updated was in February. And so, you know, things were a little different then. But the thing is, is like, you know, to some extent, the church is public. One, we want to welcome the public. And so therefore, we don't know what people's vaccination status is, and we have to function from a place that we don't know what people's vaccination status is. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that even people, you know, there are people who are not eligible to be vaccinated. They may, you know, have adverse reactions, have allergies to components in the vaccine. There are people whose immune systems don't work well, that either didn't get vaccinated, or even if they do get vaccinated, we're not sure yet how well protected they are. And so, you know, when we're thinking about coming together, we have to keep all of that in mind. So, you know, for those reasons, you know, the recommendation is when you're coming together to still wear a mask, to still maintain that distance from each other. You know, for those who can to get vaccinated, make sure you're still doing good hand hygiene. Do not come around other people when you're feeling sick. And then, you know, these are things that you want to continue to do while you're actually in worship service, is making sure you're covering coughs and sneezes, that you're washing your hands. You know, the recommendation really is to encourage use of masks as much as possible. Keeping in mind, you know, the children under two can't wear a mask. You know, children under 12 right now can't be vaccinated. And so, you know, that's a whole other group that we have to think about protecting. And, you know, as the older groups are protected with more vaccination rates, we are seeing more severe illness in some of the younger children. The other thing is just making sure, just like you do in your home, making sure, especially when you're bringing a large group of people together, that we're cleaning, you know, commonly touched surfaces very frequently, that people avoid touching them if they can. And then just continuing to to keep your distance. And obviously, this is very hard in a worship service, especially our church, we're used to, you know, hugging on each other and everything. But it's just, you know, keeping those things in mind as we think about returning together. And then the other thing is, you know, limiting the amount that we're sharing. So, you know, as we've learned more about the virus, there seems to be less transmission or less communication of the virus to others through, you know, surfaces. But, you know, the recommendation is still to avoid sharing things like hymnals and bibles. You know, so really having people bring their own things. And obviously communion, you know, we were already doing that kind of separately anyway, so keeping along those lines. If we were to go to the point that we have like a, you know, because we like to eat together, you know, really thinking about prepackaged options and not doing our traditional buffet style. So that's all I have. I'm gonna stop sharing. Thank you.
We, we want to make sure, if you have any questions for those who have presented, please share those questions in the chat. We, we definitely want to make sure we have that. Just a couple of things we want to share. The first one is in-person worship. We are getting to the place and to the point that there is a need for us to set a date for a in-person gathering. Many of you understand that we have a lot of people who have been disconnected. They're, they're not doing the digital worship and all those type of things. And we want to make sure we provide space for them. And so we, we're going to do this in phases. Phase one will be providing a safe place for those who are disconnected from the digital platform, or do not prefer that, your style of connection, and provide a early worship service at 8:00 a.m. for that group. At the same time, we will have a 8:00 a.m. online and a 10:00 a.m. online worship service during this first phase. Specifically, we want to make sure we roll out our in-person worship, providing a safe space for those who we believe are vulnerable in our community. And we don't want to test all of the things that's going on with someone's health by creating an atmosphere that was spread. And so I do want to make sure that we set a date for July the 18th. That's the third Sunday in July to have a 8:00 a.m. worship service. And that 8:00 a.m. worship service will continue. And we want to call that worship service the Table. We want to invite people to, to come experience the Table Worship Experience. And we want to ensure that those who are the most disconnected, we put them on our priority list. And in if you know of people who have not been able to really engage in the digital worship, we want to make sure that they are our priority one. Now, we know others may just desire to come to church. We're not going to stop that. And we won't have a sign up. However, we know we have a, the capacity to, to socially distance 150 people on the floor. And we want to make sure we start with that. And so we will look forward to creating the 8:00 a.m. Table Worship Experience, Gelada 18th. And we can't do it without the help of the members, specifically as we add more the need for greeters, temperature checkers, and in making sure we have the ability to have ushers and those to ensure that we have an opportunity to connect those folk at that time, so that they can be safe and people can have, come, come in and go out. Many churches that have gone back, they have experienced a short, not as many people going back, maybe they'll go back the first week, the second week, but they tape tailor out. And so we want to make sure that we provide a safe space for our, our, our members in that way. And as we move forward, I, I think it's very important for us to understand there, there are some lessons learned during the pandemic that we have to make sure that we take into account. There are, the church is not the building. The church is the people. And wherever we have people, there is an opportunity for discipleship to be taken place. During this next season of the church, it is very evident that there is a need to increase discipleship. Discipleship in smaller group settings throughout the week so that our members can be engaged wherever they are. So I want to make sure we do our best to to encourage people to engage with the, the, the membership in people in their own community. Because in their community, there's a lot of people who need to know Jesus. And so we want to make sure we understand the priority in discipleship and in our focus to encourage not two or three or four or five. I think we tripled the amount of discipleship during this COVID. However, we're going to have to do it again to activate those who are not currently engaged in personal discipleship or personally discipling others. We want to make sure that we do our best to get people in that type of space. We also believe during this time, the church is not the, 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 the church is not the building. The church is the people. And one of the things that we have been able to do is show the church in mission, in, in their community. In this next season, we want to identify ways that we can empower all of the members to be engaged in mission, not only in third ward, but to be engaged in mission wherever you are. Wherever you lay your head, how can we be engaged in mission in rally people in our communities to be engaged in that type of mission? In, in, in just one example, Pastor Hildur Ford emailed to me just yesterday about a pretty good idea of how churches are adopting goodwill centers and, and how to serve those who are serving in, in much like those who are in, let me say it this word, there are a lot of good, goodwill centers all throughout the metropolitan area. But for people who are part of the Trinity movement to specifically target and see how we can show some love in agafe toward those who are in, serving in that capacity. And that's just an idea, how we can activate and engage in missional opportunities. And so we want to make sure we do our best to see how we can do everything we can to get people engaged in discipleship and mission. The church in the future will need discipleship and mission. Those are going, those are the two barometers that we will be able to gauge our success in. How effectively we do this. We can do a whole bunch of things. We can have a whole bunch of meetings, but we won't have advanced kingdom. We can do a whole bunch of things inside the church, but we have to make sure we build relationships beyond the church. And one of the ways that I believe, and this is the final way, the third way, I believe the success of the Trinity Preparatory Academy is very, very important to the future of our church. Specifically, we have to take an honest look at ourselves and make sure we know that we are missing generations X, Y, and Z. And without those generations, we don't have anyone to pass the baton to. And so we have to think, how can we create relationships and, 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 and and get to know and disciple people from those age groups? And one of the most effective ways that we can do that is through a school. And, and we're grateful that the bishop and district superintendents and all those folk have the vision of creating all God's children to empower churches to help our curve and improve the reading level for children in every community in the conference. And we're thankful that we have been a part of that. And so I want to make sure that we, we, we do everything we can to make that successful and specifically for Trinity with our great history of education and the, the, the opportunity for people to sow seeds of volunteering, sowing seeds of, of resources, sowing seeds of, of bringing all of the wealth of all of the educators that we have in our midst to ensure that these parents and children are loved, that they're, they're disciples, and that they can experience the love of Jesus Christ in a real practical way. And so we're grateful for that. I, I want to make sure at this time, we, we look at some of the questions. If, I, I, just give a moment. I, I think Pastor Hildur may feed some of those questions to us, or if some of the questions have already been answered. So one of the questions is from Pat Williams, "When will you address the remodeling with the congregation? We do not want to be surprised, and why don't you get people that are not trustees to work with you in the decorator who is the contractor?" And so one of the things, about two years ago, we gathered a cross-section of people who were, are members of the church to, to help kind of help us kind of put these pieces together, because there were so many things that we needed to do. A lot of things have been accomplished during COVID, specifically with the sound system, the electrical system. But the thing with the, the the, 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 the color palette in the flooring and all that, we, we did not want the trustees to be the sole people to, to, to make the decision. So that's why we've reached for, for, for a, a group of people. Sadly, we only have one meeting before COVID, and we, we had the opportunity to gather at Mr. Piggie's house. And we basically looked at all the things and said, we were going to get a interior decorator to bring us a report so that the committee or team could look at that and the trustees, so we can get more perspective. So one of the things that we are doing is making sure that those individuals in, anyone else who desires to hear the presentation of the interior decorator so that they can hear that this Saturday at 10:45, so they can make sure. We also, I, I think we have an early, or a group that may come at 10:00. If you want to be a part of either one of those, we want to encourage you to be a part of that. If you want to be a part of either one of those, we want to encourage you to be a part of that line. Because we want to make sure you have an opportunity to see it in person because we did something on. A digital platform with the trustees and also the administrative board, but it does not convey. As effectively. We want to make sure we do everything we can to ensure. That we get as many people perspective because we want, we want to make sure we doing. Everything in as strategic in long lasting as possible. And so. We, we, there's a, a, another question. I, I believe Billy may have answered that one, but I, I guess I'll let Billy. Just share that publicly if you want, because I can't read it as fast as you probably can. Explain it.
Pastor, before Billy speaks, I think it's important for those who are listening to know that. Some of the aesthetic things that are to be done, this is not on the immediate table. You are setting up a profile for whenever we get to the point of creating some new aesthetics. In the church. Everyone will have a chance to see and participate. And take a look at, but this is not something that's immediately going to be done. We're trying to set up a platform where as when we do start to develop new looks in the church. Everyone will have had the opportunity to input and dialogue about it.
Are you ready for me?
I think you said it all there are, the, the, this is a, a master plan and one of the, the thoughts is we don't want to. Do something without thinking about the future. And we don't want to mishap and, you know, do anything wrong. And, and, and so we, we definitely want to make sure we, we make the right moves in. I think somewhat during this weekend, the person who refurbished our pews. Twenty-six years. He said about thirty years ago, but it was around twenty-six. He will be, we brought him in to just give us some perspective in, on the pews so. We can make sure we make the right decision. And, and, and I think that's the goal to make sure we make an informed decision. And believe me, when, when we talk about pews, we, we, we want to make sure we keep the integrity. In the beauty of the sanctuary in, 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 in all aspects. So. Billy?
Okay. Hi, everyone. There was one question submitted in the chat from Dr. Natalie Carroll. And she was asking if the church received any COVID funding. And I was responding in the chat, but I think everybody's not seeing all the questions, but I'm not sure if they're sending the answers as well.
No, so let me just address that. If you want everyone to see your question, you have to submit it to everyone. You all are submitting questions to the panelists. And the panelists are responding to the panelists. So if you want everyone to see your question, choose everyone and everyone will see your question and the answer will be given to everyone as well.
Thank you, Pastor Hilda. So as far as COVID funding, yes, we did receive some monies from COVID funding. One was a payroll protection program grant. And it was specifically using, given for payroll. We received thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that was strictly for payroll. It was a loan and that has been forgiven. So we owe zero because all of that funding went towards payroll. There was also a ten thousand dollar SBA grant, which I forgot to include in my written note. And we also received an SBA disaster loan for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And those fundings have been given under the direction of our trustees to take care of the facilities and maintenance. Items in our church. So we've had meetings over this. Over months ago and of the direction and things that are being done right now, some of it will be funded by. Some of the monies from the SBA disaster loan. If you have any other questions, put them in the chat. Thank you.
So we, we, we'll continue to go down through, through the chat. One, one of the questions were who were, who were these people who are part of the design? Recommendation team in terms of that. It really was a cross section. We, in. I, I, I know some of the. A few of the members of the trustees, we, 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 we shouted out some names. And we basically gathered those folk. We, we wanted to make sure of people who are, are not a long term. Term members, people who are, are faithful, are tithing folk, are people who are. Making sure they do their best to serve in different ministries and many of those folks. Are, are part of the team in, we, we had some close to seven or eight of those individuals. And those folk will be there to hear the report, much like everybody else. And we, we just want to make sure we hear that and hopefully all of you who are on come through. So you can see the color, but when it comes to the pews and of those type of things. We don't know, we have, we don't have enough money to, to do all of the stuff that is proposed. It's going to take a lot more commitment from people like who's on this line, who really care about their church. To help us raise the funding to ensure that we can do whatever is needed. If, 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 if we need to refurbish the pews. If it costs sixty thousand to refurbish the pews that we have compared to buy new pews for forty thousand. We want to make sure we, we share that vision because. We won't be able to pay for that without the support of the church. We can't go, we can't do that without it. And for a number of years, I could say for about two or three years. This has been coming up in the trustees. A report and some of you may not know that, you, you know, we had a couple of pews kind of breaking and tearing apart and. We, we paid for people to ensure that they can keep those things in check. We, we want to do our best to. Ensure that we make strategic moves that are well informed in. And, and well funded by, by the people of Trinity. So we definitely want to make sure. That we do our best with that. What, one, one of the things, and I, I believe it's, it's important because one of the questions. We need a church conference. You're, you're asking us to blindly follow and give money for something we may not like. We agree with repairs. Well, one of the things that we want to do at this point in, 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 everybody. Should know that for, for several years that. There has been a request for the trustees to replace the carpet in the Bradford Taylor. And we can't fix the carpet in the sanctuary. We have to replace it. And so with that, we just want to get information from a specialist or someone who knows how to do that. And that's what we're getting a report on. I, I believe the fear is that we're going to change a lot of things without. Everybody knowing, but I believe we're, we're going to do our best to make sure as many people are in, informed with that. And I think if people who want to know who are some of these people. I, I, I will be able to, I, I just got to find a document here and I'll be able to give you some of those names. In, we, we have a, a, something from. I believe this may be Miss Punch. The church body has always paid for pew restoration. The last company did not properly reinstall the pews. And so that's why we have three companies kind of looking at it. It's not just one. The, the, that, that last one is just the one who's going to make a presentation. All of them. Basically have kind of shared the same thing. We're not committing to a company. We're just. Committing to get information so that we can make decisions down the road. And, and a question is how will, how will buying new pews affect our status as a historical marker? We, we, we will study that more as we get closer to that decision route. I don't believe we're at that point. But we want to make sure and I'm, I'm quite sure Miss Punch and others are doing some research to ensure. That we're not out of line or out of compliance. One of the things that. What some have shared is of the architectural design of a community building. Is really one of the things that we want to make sure we maintain. One of the things that I want to make sure that I ask for help. With the trustees, I ask Ms. Vin and others. We, we need to make sure that we look at the Sacred Trust. Foundation who helps historical churches all across the country. We need to set up some time to do the homework. To, to find out how we can make sure we get more support because we do have a historic church and there's funding all across. America to ensure that all of the historic churches are supported. And I, I just want to make sure that we have some people who can move forward in pursuing that grant. Because. Some of the design that we have, insurance companies are not. Too key to funding insurance for that. And so if we're talking about, we have to. Do something different that would change the architecture. We will want something that would get support from beyond the congregation in, and that's some of the things that we want to make sure we study. So we can make sure we do our, our best. So I want to make sure I, 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 I thank everyone for being. On tonight's call. If you are not planning to be a part of the. Presentation that will take place Saturday. Please, you know, we, we want to make sure we get as many people to come and see. Some of the recommendations. We have the color charts and those things at the church at this time. But we do want to make sure we do our best to, 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 to receive that. To get everybody to receive that. Our question is, can we receive monthly notice on meetings being held to conduct church business? We, we can do that and one of the things that we, we, we normally use the same. Zoom link and we will be able to provide that out and people will always have an opportunity to, to tap in and. We, we will do a, a better job to make sure everybody know when some things are going down. Well, thank you, Judge Palmer. And we want to make sure I, I get your help if you can. Think about email text. Some of the members that you know who have been disconnected from. The digital worship experience. I want to make sure I, I call all of those who are. Disconnected to, to invite them to this worship service that we will provide for phase one. Our hope is by watching the variant and all those things that everything will continue to subside. However, we are clear that we will be utilizing the safe. The. The, the protocols of social distancing and, and from here until. However, we believe a month from phase one that we may be able to move to phase two. If we don't see an uptick or anything else that's going on. And so a month from phase one, we will provide phase two. And, and have the ten o'clock worship starting and we will continue, we will continue. The online worship service and that will be just another community. That we'll have an opportunity to continue to reach. We need to make sure that the deceased members are removed from the sick and shut in list. Thank you, Ms. Anna for, for. For seeing that and bringing that to our attention. Well, I, I, I see. Ms. Anna has come back on the video and are you coming back to close us in prayer, Ms. Anna? Art has popped up as well. If anybody have anything else to say, please share in, in, in between art and. Etter, y'all close us in prayer.
Eddie, you're muted. Those questions that, that we have a chance to address all the questions. But now it's still on mute. Pastor, oh, he's on mute.
You're not muted. We can hear you.
Okay. Well, you can tell. Are there any questions remaining in the chat? So we'll go.
We, we actually got all of them.
Oh, great, because we could get to them and respond with the individuals. So let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for this meeting. We thank you for all who participated. All the comments that were made and all the comments that were received. Father, we pray that we go on with your work with a renewed vision, a renewed optimism. Father, we pray that we go on with your work with a renewed vision, a renewed optimism and a renewed passion for your church and your son, Jesus Christ. Bless us as you've blessed us as we came out. And we pray that you continue to bless us as we go back in. In the name of the Lord and Savior. Amen.
Art, you, you are mute if you're, I see you.
I just said goodnight and reminded everyone not to forget Saturday morning at ten o'clock.
Yes, Saturday morning, ten o'clock, we'll have the mayor there. We'll have our councilman there. We want to make sure as many people can be there for the photos shot at ten o'clock.
And, and most importantly, to receive the fresh produce that will be available.
Amen.
And also invite your family and friends, because this is a community event.
Yes. And, and just for everybody to know, I, I will email Art and Anna the chat, so they can look at if it's anything that was missed that we make sure we follow up with.
Great.
All right.